I will call to order the city council study session of Monday, March 21st. And first up is going to be the American Tower, Tower Point Officers Discussion Offers. I saw C and I in there somehow, somewhere.
I see Adam. I don't see Patrick.
Can you tell us what's going on with the internet today?
That's a great question. I wasn't having any issues until I got over here, to be honest with you.
Sorry, folks, that we're having some internet issues, it looks like.
I mean, I'm connected. I don't know. It's slow.
It shows that I'm going to try to connect again. Try again. Try again, because it disconnected from me.
I see. Hi, Patrick. I'm going to unmute you. Hi, Patrick. Good to see you again.
Well, good to be here. Good to be here. I hope it's helpful.
I, based on your past track record, I'm going to say yes.
Well, we'll see.
Are you guys up on your internet?
Yeah, I have it on my phone. Right.
Excellent.
So internet is not working, but yeah, go ahead.
All right. Patrick is unmuted, so he's available to talk and help walk us through these offers. But as you know, we've had now two offers. We've got our offer from American Tower, which was that 1.4 million, 1.2, I'm sorry. Few numbers have been thrown out over the last few months. So 1.2 is from, million is from American Tower. And that would, I mean, that's essentially it. And then we also have an offer from Tower Point. And we had them present to us a couple of weeks ago. And their offer is 1.6 plus any addition, 100% of any additional revenue from any carriers that come on, should any carriers come on after we sign our agreement. So both of those, yeah. Yes, sorry, plus 400,000 when Dish Network signed on, which appears to be in the works right now. So both offers were provided to you again in your packet. American Tower has requested, and the letter in your packet was not updated with a new date, but in my discussions with Lorene, she did indicate that although in the letter, they wanted an answer by the 15th, they were willing to wait until, you know, this meeting to get some clarity. Yes, American Tower. They, so she's waiting to hear from, she's waiting to hear from us. And ideally, we'll be able to give them an answer one way or another today or within this week. So with that, I'll let you guys begin discussing. Again, Patrick Ossman, who was with Wayne State, he was here before, and he is here again to help us with any of his expertise and knowledge. Does that sound about right, Patrick?
Well, I don't know how much I can give you versus I have some questions for you. I was a little shocked actually to learn that you're collecting four times as much revenue from your current situation than what I understood from looking at the contract that I was given that you have with American Tower. So my question still stands, where's the contract that covers these other payments? And when I run these other payments through, instead of looking at $1,700 a month, looking at, I forget what it was, close to 6,000 a month. Just playing with that, you're collecting close to $100,000 a year, according to what I can see from this. And the net present value of that over a 30-year time period, depending on what discount factor you use, and again, I'm not an accountant, but you know, give me Excel and some formulas and I can play with some stuff. But the net present value I come up with is something like 2.2 million over a 30-year timeframe. And you're not giving up your property for 99 years, which is what the folks from Tower are looking for. And yeah, you have an offer to buy out from the American, American Tower, oh boy, names here, American Tower, that's lower. But part of me, as I recall, looking at your current contract, it just continues as is unless you change it. And so they wanted you to lower your payments, but if you let the current contract go, I think it stays as is. So I haven't analyzed that option. But in looking at this, again, I just come back to the missing, the missing factor. What's your current contract? Why is American Tower sending you these payments, or why are you getting them directly? I got the impression you're getting them directly from AT&amp;T and Verizon or T-Mobile. So I'm still in the dark as to what it is that governs what you get. And of course, the folks that want to buy out your lease, they want copies of these contracts. They want to know exactly what it is that they're buying into. My understanding is you had to call American Tower to say, well, what are you paying us? Well, I don't know. So I have questions. I have questions for you.
Yeah, Patrick, the payments aren't coming from the carriers themselves, correct? They're coming from American Tower.
Yes, but why are they coming from the carriers? What does American Tower get out of having the tower? Are they getting payments from the carriers as well? And what is the contract arrangement that says the carriers have to pay later village?
Patrick, I think the contracts are not contracts, but the payments are coming in from American Tower, correct, Dan?
Correct.
Yeah, not from the, not from Verizon specifically, or AT&amp;T, or you know, any carrier coming in from American Tower.
Okay, so American Tower is sending you three or four checks a month at this point?
No, actually, they send us one check for the, they sent us one check for the T-Mobile. I think Dish was the other one. And then they send us another check for the lease of the tower. And then AT&amp;T sends us a different check for their portion on that tower, is my understanding.
None of, none of these payments that you're getting from American Tower are called for, as far as I can see, in the lease that has been presented to me that goes back to, what, 1998 or whatever. None of that is there. So I don't know, you know, obviously, they feel they need to pay you that money, but I don't see it. And why AT&amp;T would be sending you something separately from what you're getting from American Tower? I mean, now, I did learn, you know, that you do have a second tower, but there are different payments for that. That one's totally separate. You're only looking at the one tower right now. What is it, Sunnybrook, I think?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. So if we just focus on that, what's the contract? I don't, I don't know. I can't tell.
Is that $106,000 only for Sunnybrook?
Yes.
Okay, so where, where the, is the Sunny, or the 12-mile one reflected in the budget?
There's, there's two. The MetroPCS, which the name has to be changed, because it used to be MetroPCS before they changed it to something else, to something else. And then the other ones under the AT&amp;T.
Okay, and all of those payments come from American Tower?
No, the AT&amp;T ones come from AT&amp;T, and there's two payments that come from the AT&amp;T.
Okay, because it looks like the 12-mile one had a 2017 contract, and it looks like it went with a company similar to Tower Point.
We get a check from AT&amp;T.
2000, well. And then also, the American, or Tower Alliance is also a third party. That is not American Tower. They're a vendor, but they're not American Tower. And I don't know if we've talked specifically with or directly to American Tower, because if you go on their website, you can fill out something if you are interested in renewing your lease or sale or whatever. And so I'm just wondering if, you know, we looked at, looked at that to see if perhaps there would be.
Well, American Alliance is speaking for American Tower. American Tower has hired American Alliance for this.
They have what, hired them?
They have hired them.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, Tower Alliance is the authorized vendor of American Tower.
I know. They also do the same kind of thing that Tower Point, Tower Point does, where they're, where they are also buying and leasing. So I'm wondering if, if, sorry, Tower Alliance is going to purchase from us, and then they're going to make something on it also. So I think there's a lot of relationships in here that were not, not very clear at the beginning. This isn't just, you know, American Tower and whatever. And then I looked at the budget too, and it's all, you know, $106,000. Is it 60,800? No, wait, 45,000 is coming from Sunnybrook? Under Metro, MetroPCS lease payments?
50, roughly about 5100.
I think it's about 60.
Just said AT&amp;T lease payments is 60,889. MetroPCS lease payments are 45,000. And I don't know if there are other ones.
Well, AT&amp;T used to be on the Sunnybrook Tower. I mean, they used to, I think, own the Sunnybrook Tower at one time. So the, the way the payments are coming, yeah, we only get the two, three checks. That's all we get.
Okay. Yeah, again, I'm agreeing with our guest in that there's a lot more money coming in that we haven't really talked about. So if we were to take the Tower Point presentation and line it up with, with our actual amounts, because I think we're getting more than 172369 a month, right? For, for Sunnybrook, 1,72369, is that all we're getting a month?
Just for the tower, but we're getting.
Not all the other things that go with. So we, yeah, because we're not, we're not looking at the whole big picture here. We're just looking at bits and pieces, and I, you know, that's.
Well, I mean, it wasn't, I'm sorry. You say, looking at this, at 1763 a month, and if that's for the tower, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Dish is expected, that would come to $7,053 a month. And at that, over the course of 30 years, you would collect 3.265 million dollars over a 30-year timeframe. The net present value of that, if you use a 6% discount, you might want to use a higher discount, but even at a 6% discount, that knocks it down to 1.876 million over a 30-year timeframe. So looking at that at this point, this totally changes what I suggested to you before. You had a great deal if somebody was going to offer you 1.2 million when you were getting 1763 a month. But at three to four times that, neither one of these deals looks like a great deal to me. Especially if you look at, and but again, it depends. If you've got a big project that you need to fund right now, then sometimes that's what drives, you know, it's a force to say, you know, we really need this money now, rather than have to borrow it, take out a bond and pay interest on it and all that. But if you don't need this right now, having a steady supply of income for the next 30 years with the option of doing something, you know, maybe raising the rates 30 years from now? I mean, I, I don't know. That's my initial reaction to this. But again, I have no idea why you're getting all this money. I haven't seen a contract that covers this.
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only downside of continuing on as is, is that, you know, there's some potential risk that revenue could add. I mean, that's the only downside.
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear. What's the risk?
I said, the only, the only risk would be that, that, or the only downside would be is that there would be some risk that, that, you know, tower could become obsolete. They could pull from the tower, you know, vendors could leave the tower, whereas the, the two offers that we have on the table are guaranteed money. You know, that's the only thing I could think of as a downside of continuing on, unless I'm missing something.
We currently have two companies wooing us, and I don't think that would be the case if they didn't think they were going to be making money on this. And what I, what I was reading, a lot of times on the backend, they make more that we don't even, wouldn't even know about if they were to purchase it, and then they would get more from American Tower.
Yeah, I wasn't saying that as a reason to go with one of those. I was just saying.
Yeah.
Well, I know, but that was the reasons that we were given by Tower Point, so, yeah.
You know, you, you raise a very good issue about them maybe wanting to go someplace else. One of the things I've heard is, A, it's very difficult to find another spot that is going to allow the tenants on your tower to reach the people that they were currently reaching. It's highly disruptive to have to move from one tower to another. And so it's, it's somewhat unlikely, I think, that tenants would want to move. Now, it's possible that Dish Network could go belly up or never happen. Although, even if I play with this and say, you don't have Dish, you only have, you know, you know, American Tower and AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, it still comes out to a net present value of 1.4 million over 30 years. But, you know, we haven't mentioned Verizon. We haven't mentioned Google. We haven't mentioned Sonic Wave or a few of the other folks that appear to want to get into this business. We haven't talked about making use of other spectrum that's become available, the CBRS spectrum, which some people are making use of. So my gut is that the need for being where they are on the tower where they are. Yeah, there's, there's always some risk involved, but, you know, it could get struck by lightning and put them out of business. I mean, you know, yeah. Although hopefully it's well-grounded and that's not an issue. So, yeah, it's one of those things that you have to weigh and say, well, how do you feel about this? And go the next step. If you really want to cash out, then you start looking and saying, well, is this really, you know, worth only 1.2 or 1.6? Or do you go back to Tower and say, well, if you want this, it's going to cost you more, and here's why. You know, so yeah, they will claim that they're taking the risk in this and that, but they wouldn't be taking the risk if they didn't think they were going to be making a lot of money on this tower. So. That's my take on it, but I'm just, you know, I'm not in, I'm not in this business. I can talk about the certain spectrum and what have you, but you've got a wonderful asset. You've got people that want it. The question is, what do you want out of it?
Thank you.
Dan, do you think you could reach out to American Tower and ask them for contracts for how we're getting the money from the vendors, since we can't find them?
Should check out that 2017 one also, because if we went with this NCWPCS, MPL, 25-year sites, Tower Holding LLC, then we already did something like, probably Tower Point, with that tower and 12-mile. If that's who the contract is, the contract, we got a copy of it, is it signed? So I don't know. And wouldn't, was, was Scott have, you guys have Matt's files and everything? 98, 1998 was the first one, and then 2017 is the one on 12-mile. But again, that had, didn't have signatures on it or anything.
The other thing to look at, if you have an update to the 1998 contract on Sunnybrook, is whether or not American Tower has a right of first refusal, or if they have some kind of clause that prevents you from assigning the lease to someone else. So I don't know if there are any, you know, things in there that would get in the way of you saying, well, we want to sell our, our lease and rights to this other entity. So that would be something I'd look for as well.
That 2017 one does have a right to first refusal clause in that, and then wanted to add the right to first refusal, so.
Yeah, the question is what exists now, and what exists now may be your best bet. I, I'd go back and look at that. As I recall, your current contract kind of ended this month or last month with American Tower, but it continues on, on an annual basis. And I don't picture American Tower wanting to pull the plug on that. So right now is what they're offering as far as, you know, a new lease, any better than what is continuing? Because I recall, they wanted to drop the payments from 1,700 and some to 1,500 and some? Do they back off from that now? I don't know.
I guess the question is, what do we, what do we do, what do we tell American Tower? Do we want to tell them, you know, that we want to continue on for, maybe I'm throwing, throwing ideas out there, you know, continue on for another year while we continue to look into this? You know, look into the possibility of, of, you know, them purchasing it, but we need more time, but we don't want to hold them off. I mean, because they're going to, you know, they've been, they've been trying to get an answer for us for over a year now. And, you know, I think we at least owe them some type of answer.
And for sure, that's American Tower, because if you go online, that's kind of the story. You'll say, you know, we were approached by Tower Point, or we were approached by so-and-so. They told us that American Tower was going to sell the tower, or they weren't going to need it anymore. Kind of sounded like, you know, the sales presentation that we had.
Yeah, yeah, and these all seem like tactics to get you to sign on the dotted line now, out of fear. I, I would suggest that you talk to American Tower and say, show us the current contract. You know, we are studying, you know, the current situation. We really want to know what we're giving up in order to go to what you're now offering. And, you know, you can claim, you know, our files were burned up in a fire or whatever. But you really need to see the current contract. Now, it's a little dangerous asking them, because if you don't have it, then maybe, you know, they can say, oh, we don't need to pay you those other three payments, because you've got no contract. Show it to us.
Before American Tower is approached.
Looking to that, definitely. And I think it's reasonable, as the caller's stating, you know, the pressure. Granted, they've been looking for an answer for a while now, but I think it's totally reasonable to say, especially if you're, we can give them some sort of a more firm timeframe, you know, whether it's even three or four months, something like that. And yes, definitely, any contract, any, you know, anything that is available should be reviewed to see exactly what you're saying, what you're giving up, or what the current terms are, and, you know, what it could be. And this is a hot commodity, you know, I mean, like what you said, there is a risk. But on the other hand, there's IGs expanding and, you know, with autonomous vehicles coming up, and there's, seems there's be a lot more.
Probably, probably a low risk, but a risk.
So, you know, definitely, yes, we need to, and our office will definitely take the first step right away to try and locate, locate whatever we have, and then go from there. If we don't have it, you know, approaching them in a reasonable manner, that's not going to.
Well, I have checked the clerk's files, because the clerk should have the records, but they might have gotten moved to the manager's office when all this started. And so I don't know where that file's at, and I've been trying to find that file. So I have been looking for them, but it's either, you know, the clerk has them somewhere that I'm not sure, but I thought I knew where all the records were supposed to be. And then I've been looking in the manager's office, but everybody's record keeping is different.
Hopefully, Scott would know better, but hopefully, you know, this would have something, whether it's electronically or in a paper file.
Scott's the one that gave us the 1998 and 2017 one. So I'm thinking they must have been with Matt if Scott took Matt's files and whatever.
Okay, yep, all right. Yeah, definitely.
Well, feel free to blame anything on me, just saying, you know, you were all set to move forward, and then, you know, somebody came along and raised, you know, some, you know, uncomfortable questions. I don't know. Whatever works for you.
I mean, clearly, they're not going to just pick up and.
Our due date was, to make a decision is.
Well, the letters, the most recent due date from American Tower was last, I guess that was Tuesday, the 15th. But we, I'd talked to Lorene, and she said she was willing to flex that date. We had talked about, she knew that you were going to be discussing this tonight, so I believe she's anticipating some sort of response this week. But I think Leanne's suggestion of, you know, at least giving them some sort of timeframe, you know, three, four months to, you know, have this as a regular study session item and talk through it. I, I mean, no sense and no harm in trying, right? Throwing that out there.
And frankly, I don't know that it'll take you three to four months to figure this out once you get that contract that seems to be the key to this. And then saying, okay, look at current contract, look at what they're offering at American Tower to continue, look at what the offer is from Tower Incorporated or whatever it is, then run down the list and say, okay, you know, here's what we're giving up, here's what we're getting. So, yeah, I don't, I don't think it would take all that long.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Didn't you ask at the last meeting, that they not expect a decision this tonight? No?
I thought, but we were doing something that we were.
I thought you had said, you need to get more info, but, okay.
Let me know. Okay.
Appreciate it, Patrick.
So if I'm clear, just to, Scott would know, and I apologize, he would know more if I probably ask him. But you said he did give you copies of.
1998 and 2017.
Okay, so then what are you, what are?
Updates.
Oh, the update.
Update on 1998, because it's two different towers.
Amendments on it, okay.
The updates or anything that would show why we're getting revenue beyond the, so, so for example, the Sunnybrook Tower document, you know, shows that we're getting. Beyond the, so so for example, the the Sunnybrook Tower document, you know, shows that we're getting roughly seventeen hundred dollars per month. For for lease for the power, but we're also getting additional seventy nine dollar a month payments from T T Mobile and Dish. But we don't know why we're getting those. We don't have the contracts that show that they should be sending us that month. And so we're trying to understand that before we before we make.
And I thought you were getting them from A T and T and T Mobile. And Dish was forthcoming, but then I heard that you actually got a check already from Dish. So it sounds like you're getting checks from four different places already. So.
Well, it could be a review of the. Of what we have, if that says, you know, any additional co-locators, you're going to start getting money, so. They may be didn't even, maybe that was on their end. They got a co-locator and under what we have, that's why they're doing it too. So we'll. We'll do a full review of those and get some answers hopefully.
Thank you. Anything else?
We'll move on to the, thank you, Patrick, the infrastructure project update.
All right. You all take care. Good luck.
All right, so. I left at your seats today is. A short memo about related to some questions that I received from council member last week. And I wanted to take some time to actually put this together and. So you had it all available in front of you and in writing, so you. It all had the information available to you, but really it came down to the sidewalk replacement program. Who's doing the inspections? How is it happening? What's the criteria? And, you know, what's what's the process moving forward? How, you know, will the residents be notified, etc.? So. Again, all the information's in here, so you can digest again, but all of the inspections that are being done. Right now are Gipps Webster engineers. Stat and our other assigned engineer Andy Casper walked with the individuals that are. Doing the inspections and marking the sidewalks. They went over the criteria. That we have so and and the entire sidewalk replacement program is guided by. The the ordinance, right? The chapter sixty two, the sidewalk construction, repair and maintenance. And so I gave you a copy of that, so light reading if you'd like to fall asleep easily tonight. So the so the sidewalk program is guided by that, by the ordinance and then also included. On your desk is the the sidewalk marking key. So that explains, one, what the codes are, although I believe there might be some markings that. Engineers are using a little, the lines with the arrows. So. So that's really. But the sidewalk key gives you the gives you the code, what it is. I mean, really, the big ones that we're looking for are. The the quote unquote, the stubbers, those those are the trip hazards. We're looking at the broken or cracked flags. Um, that's an automatic replacement that the stubbers are also. There's two different methods to do that. You can either replace it or grind them down and it really just depends on. How big that gap is. But so that key is what is what those individuals are using as they go out and mark those sidewalks. They. They and as such, you know, that's why there's a lot of flags that were marked. A second walkthrough was done to reconfirm. All of those quantities, they're nearly finished. Once all of that work is completed. Then we will be getting. Letters out to all of those residents. Those are part of. What's being marked right now is your two project work. So those residents will get a letter detailing. The work that needs to be done. They will receive an estimate. They will receive the sidewalk marking key and then they will also receive information on the city's payment plan. I expect all of that information to go out early April. And they will have. They'll have a couple months, give or take two, to do the work themselves. They can pull their own permits. They can secure their own contractor, pull their own permits. And have the work done. They just need to. Make sure that it's that they they tell us, so we so we can be aware and we can make sure that the contractor doesn't. Do that work inadvertently. But if they choose and if they don't. Choose to pull, you know, get their own contractor and they want to go with the cities, the cities program, they don't need to do anything. They don't need to. Alert us in any way. We will just assume that they are saying yes. We are estimating that that year two project work will begin mid to late June. So that'll give year two residents sufficient time to get the work done themselves if they so choose. We are also aware that there is significant punchless items that still need to happen as part of year one as well as there were. Some areas of the city that were to be included in year one, but due to the late start and just our seasonal. Our seasonal issues, not all year one work got completed. So those residents. Will be getting a letter more than likely this week, letting them know. That they are prioritized for year for this year and work will can, work will begin as soon as the frost laws are lifted. So. That will probably be about mid-April, right around the same time that the paving. Work will be done, but that is. That's in a nutshell where we're at with the the sidewalk, the the. The website will be will be updated. I know it's got mostly. Two thousand twenty one information, the the meat of the. The program information has not changed, just the dates. Obviously, letters and whatnot will be updated, but. The first task was getting all the information together, so it'll be updated on the website in the next week or so.
Did the second second pass reduce the number of?
Significantly.
Significantly, yes.
Yeah, and I will apologize. It is difficult. They did use the criteria. My guys were out there. I started seeing some of these inspection reports come in and it was. There was a lot of sidewalks, a lot of the holes and pitting and scaling. I tell them health, safety and welfare. If anyone's gonna get hurt on it, walk past it. If it's borderline. That, you know, it goes to the resident, right? So my project engineer Andy went back out, no cost to the city, Thursday, Friday, he finished up today. We inspected all the ones that had a lot of excessive scaling. And we got them requalified, so I do apologize. I'm sure a lot of your residents had some. Worries some days, some expensive days, so. You know, the 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 stubbers are easy. You can see them. It's usually next to trees. The cracked ones are easy. It's the scaling and the pitting. It's a little more subjective.
So I see that you covered enough, like you colored them in.
Yeah.
Yes, water based.
Is that will next rain?
No.
It'll take a, it'll take a little while, but it'll.
My Andy will be back out and we will remark at our cost the ones that are coming out. Yes.
And are those G I S or no?
No, we did not G I S. If the G I S was.
It was a good experiment, but it didn't work out quite the way we wanted to.
Wanted to. It was great to have pictures of everything, but it didn't quantify what we wanted.
The the locations tended to be the 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 percentage of on offness with the G I S couldn't differentiate between like. The flag here and the flag right here, so. And Barb, to your question too, when that has, when that's, when that occurred last year, like when the contractor was like, am I supposed to do this? Or not supposed to do this? They would call Andy and Andy would go out there and and, you know, check onsite with them to confirm, so.
Yeah, I do want to also, Susie had last year's program correct on how we're gonna finish it this year with one little. Issue. Starting in mid-April, we're gonna be reconstructing Lathrup from. Eleven Mile, I guess, back around the South Field and all them streets are gonna be dead ended. There's no way we're gonna get a sidewalk contractor in there to do any of that work, so we've asked him to delay that until we're done with the paving. Them them side streets there are gonna be very difficult to, you know, get vehicles down, let alone cement trucks and workers, so. They're gonna start work, complete the Southfield Road Boulevard. Then they're gonna move back over and finish the west side of Southfield, south of eleven. And then we hope by then they'll be able to get over the Lathrup Boulevard area and finish that up, so. We're trying to coordinate all this. There's a lot going on, working hard to. Keep contractors away from each other and, you know, residents be able to drive down their street.
Yeah, question. Is there any kind of appeal process if?
The the best way to appeal is just probably email Suzie or I'm sure her name's on all that.
Yeah.
We'll be happy to go back out and look at.
Okay, yeah, okay. And then also, when are people charged? Now, were the people who were supposed to have their work done last year, is that already going on to their tax bill?
No, and it's not going on their tax bill. What will happen is the only individuals that have received. The only, the only individuals that have received invoices are those who have had work entirely completed. So. Invoices will not be sent to anyone having project work this year, whether it is. Holdover from year one or year two, they will not get invoices until that work is completed. So and they have, for example, the invoices that have already been out, they have until December first to either. Paid off or enter into the city's payment plan. If they have not done either of those things by December first at that, then. At that point, it will roll onto their taxes, so. The whole amount, yep, so. You're, I mean, moving forward, the intent is to give residents. Plenty of time to to make those payments, so they and so they have the option and they are. Able to make as many payments as they choose before that December first deadline, so if they want to come in every single week. And make twenty five dollar payments, that's completely fine. That is not set. Could we do that on? Could we do that since they have invoices? And it has and it has an invoice generated with it, right? So. Yes. The answer will be yes. I I totally understand that.
I was just saying that there is gonna still be additional charge.
Yes. Yes, there's a credit card fee and and. There is, if you, if a resident wants to do the payment plan, there's a fifty dollar fee, administrative fee for each year, so it's a two-year program. There's. There's no finance charge associated with it, though. It's just the fifty dollars.
Thank you. Thank you for pulling all this together. Appreciate it. The last question, what is the cost per square for residents? Five seventy seven and six eighty two. What is a typical sidewalk block cost?
It's like one eighty five, right?
Something like that. It's twenty five square feet times whatever that unit was on there. Yeah, each square is twenty five square feet.
It depends on the thickness too, so the thicker.
The ones in the driveway are six inches, the one outside of the driveway are four inch thick.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And next is discussion of anything that's on the regular agenda. Like regular meeting agenda. Or we can adjourn it. No, no, sorry, not yet. Any questions for. Regarding the agenda for our regular meeting agenda.
Then mayor and council comments.
Okay, I was approached by a resident. Who had some lives on San Rosa. Work was done last year. Everything was torn up. Got some pictures. We have a beautiful rain garden and now this is what we have. They were expecting everything to be cleared up by now with spring coming, but instead they got. A notice from the city mandating maintenance of properties. Ditch and culvert needs your attention. Culvert must be clear and free of debris for storm stormwater to flow freely. Please correct the above cited problems by three twenty five and notify the city's code enforcement department that the corrections have been made. Then that was on the ninth of March and then on the eleventh of March, there was another one that went out. About ditch and culvert maintenance and. She is told that she needs to get a building permit and if she doesn't. Do a pull a building permit by April twenty second, if she doesn't do that, then she's gonna have to pay two thousand four hundred seventy seven dollars. Now, I'm thinking perhaps this is because the road is being done and they have to pay for their culvert and ditches, but is this how people are being notified of that?
About the other resident that's over here has the exact same thing that, you know, thank you for bringing up the picture that I, I mean, yeah, the picture I sent you.
Oh, yes.
It's the same exact letter and I think over here, that's also consumers energy or D T E that's doing something that's tore up their. Street too. I mean, the culverts.
Yes, so. Kind of two, two separate things. So the the ditch and culverts, several, we had forty three, forty three, forty four letters that went out. For two properties that. They need ditch and culvert work to coincide with the paving projects that are going to happen. All of those individuals received those letters with a cost estimate specific to their property. Those were all evaluated prior to any work happening by consumers or D T or anybody else, so. That ditch and culvert, like you have to, you have, you are responsible for X, Y, Z amount. That is separate. It's not, it has nothing to do with the consumer's energy work.
This is the water replacement on Sam Rose. This was a big, big project last summer. So they, you know, it's supposed to be taken care of. Now, I, as I said, as I'm reading, this is like, this is a different project, but. Had to agree to paying for the ditch and culverts. If they didn't, the road wasn't gonna be going to be done. But where where was that in the process that people were given the option?
So that that was if extensive, if extensive ditch work was necessary for residents. So for example, on Cambridge is a good example. You know, they were slated for. For for road or for roads, we have, we have a replacement. Yeah, and and their ditches were in in such poor shape. That, you know, again, we wouldn't have gotten the full life out of the new roadway because the ditches weren't functioning. And so in that instance, they would have, had they not decided as a as a street to to do their. Do their dishes and have them repaired, then we would have gone to a different street.
Right, but but I thought that was the, that's what we were told. That was the process and the plan for all of the work. If you didn't want it, if you were on the eligible list. And your road was picked, if you didn't want it and the residents didn't agree to doing the ditch work, it wasn't gonna be done. I mean, twenty four seventy seven is a pretty significant amount of money. So again, I thought that was, was it, I mean, I can go back and look at all my notes and all this stuff on Facebook and all of the. Town hall presentations and all that stuff and I was pretty sure residents were told they would have an option, so. This doesn't, this doesn't look like an option.
Actually, so so that. So that that's actually a little different than another way as well. These these ditch and culvert replacements are also being done via code enforcement. Separate from the road project, so these aren't, these aren't enforcements through the the road projects. These are. Ditches and culverts that are in violation of. ditches and culverts that are in violation of.
They're non-compliant.
But, but how, how do, how do we send a twenty-four seventy-seven bill to somebody when this is what happened and it's because we had work done with the water main replacement? And who, and who is, like, who's coordinating this?
So, so when we walk the streets, we're, you know, we're looking at individual culverts and the ones that are non-compliant and, and most of them are because they keep so much, I mean, half of them you could see coming through the driveway. So we've been writing them up as non-compliant and to be removed and replaced. As far as the ditching, based on, on last year and this year, no residents are getting assessed for any ditching, the bond's picking that up.
Okay, because ditch and culvert may be assessed, so.
Yeah, but, but, you know, the bond issues picking up the ditching. It's the residence portion of the culvert and, you know, the city's also picking up the first three to five feet of the pavement in somebody's driveway because we would do that anyways, whether the culvert was bad or not. So the residents really paying for a smaller, it's probably the larger portion, but a larger portion of that driveway removal and replacement and the culvert removal and replacement.
Yeah, and, and the other, the other thing as well is, is what we've talked about, at least in the first two years of the road project, the, the ditches actually were in a lot better condition than we had anticipated. You know, we didn't have to do a special assessment for major ditch work for anybody last year or this year with the exception of Cambridge. And again, Cambridge was a little bit different because those people came to us and asked for the.
And do we know that this damage was there prior to?
Address, because I do remember one, one rain garden on the end, dead ends of one of them two streets that we showed on our plans to protect. I don't remember one mid, when I say mid-block from Southfield to Lathrup, but I'd be more than happy to look at that. I don't remember a rain garden in there. And, you know, I, I do feel for them residents, they've got a brand new water main, they've had consumers down there right now. I'm working with consumers, trying to, what should I say, negotiate some restoration on behalf of the city. So I'm still working on that.
Was that with the cults estimating?
Well, I, no, I'm, I'm talking with consumers, it's a consumer's project, cults is their subcontractor.
Remember correctly, that's because consumers is tearing up their lawns and then we're going to be tearing up their lawns, so rather than fix their lawns twice, we're negotiating with consumers to try to say, we'll do it, but you give us some of that money.
Let's see, that's one of the pictures I sent you, it looks like that's what happened on her lawn. And I actually just sent you a picture of the letter, I didn't send you a picture, I just thought about it, I'm going to send you a picture of the grass, but it's right here in California.
Okay, I know I've got the.
But she's not on the same street.
Look, if you can take the addresses down and look into them.
It's probably a lot of addresses, I mean.
The ones that actually got in contact with us.
Dug up about every property, because, you know, they, they need to do their directional boring all the way to the meter, they've probably got some private property work, which I don't want the city to do, they're going to have to do the private property work. We're trying to negotiate the work in the public right away.
Send it out, once you go and look at it, just send it through email. Anything else here?
No, oh, yes, actually, on our website, we, this is kind of connected to this. We have a whole big thing on rain gardens and all the benefits to the, to the community and whatever, yeah. We're tearing things up and then not putting them back, right? I mean, are they responsible? Like, like her rain garden, like, is that going to be replaced or re-done or?
We have said that we will restore with grass seed. Restore with grass, right? I know we have the rain garden, I know there was a rain garden program, it was highly publicized for a long time and there's a lot of really beautiful gardens out there. As I have understood it over the years, it kind of ended up morphing into less so much on the species specific to rain gardens and just plantings of, of flowers that may or may not necessarily be good for rain gardens and good to be in the ditches, so. I mean, obviously, we tried to stay away from the properties that have those rain gardens in them or in those ditches, but if we need to, if we need to, you know, address products in those areas, then they will be restored of grass.
It wasn't just the species, it was also the treatment of the soil underneath and making it so that it drains appropriately. I know it's part of the infrastructure recommendation that we made, we, we had talked about rain gardens being an administrative decision on a case-by-case basis because some of them that were done correctly are not blocking the flow of the water in the ditches, whereas, you know, a large majority of them that weren't done correctly are impediments to the water. And so we, we said that that would be an administrative decision on a case-by-case basis for the road project.
I'd personally like to see us kind of redo the rain garden program and somehow because right now I don't think we have anyone on staff that can say, hey, that's, that rain garden is installed exactly as it should be and these are, you know, these are the correct species, I don't think we have anybody on staff that has that, that level of knowledge. And I would like for us to find a way to promote the rain gardens, but to make sure that they're done properly and possibly even just register them. So we know, like, hey, that's not actually a violation, like if somebody, you know, somebody comes down and says, no, that's not a violation, that's an actual rain garden, but I, that's a, that's a program evaluation. Right, but like I.
I know, I know there was someone that came and worked with people and taught them how to do it. Some people that did it correctly.
And I, I would love to continue those programs, but again, we just don't have anybody on staff right now that has that, so I think.
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple emails out on that same topic, because I know there's been a resident who contacted me a few times over the last six months about doing rain gardens this spring, so.
That was all landing. And then one last piece with that, I had a complaint, again, about the giant boulders that are so close to the road and people are, you know, afraid they're going to hit them or whatever. What, I know this is a hot topic for a while, were people grandfathered in if they didn't meet the ordinance or how did that?
The last, the last council talked about that and I know there was a lot of disagreement among the council members, but I think the final and ultimate decision was that, that it just wasn't, the city wasn't enforcing it. Technically, you're not supposed to have any vegetation in the, in the, the green belt and a lot of people have rocks and boulders and so then the discussion came up about, well, do we start ticketing people for that and you know, the end result was that we were just going to let it be.
Is there a way to have something looked at in case it is a danger or whatever, this person, so they're afraid they're going to especially when there's.
I mean, I think C-click Fix and then we can go from there. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
I, I know we've, I brought this up before, I know we've talked about having code enforcement for the other nineteen miles of, of roadways that aren't having their ditches looked at. The, the three-year road project, we talked about having the code enforcer looking for obvious things like, you know, tree roots that are blocking, you know, culverts and, you know, debris and stuff like that, so I just wanted to know what the stats of that is. Now that the snow is clearing and it's going to be pretty obvious where those, you know, where, where some of those, where that low hanging fruit is that we can, you know, make some, at least some minimal improvements to the, the ditching system to those nineteen. Kelly, so those nineteen miles of road that are, are not addressed under the, under the road plan.
So we'll, I'll sit down with Rami and we'll see if we can develop a plan to, to attack that.
And just kind of going off that too, and I'm not the complainer about code enforcement, but there's no way that it's just a regular drive around to see what's going on. It can't be, because I know, as I called you today, there have been tires at a house that's been sitting in the driveway for at least a month.
And that's on C-click Fix for him to?
So I've talked to Rami about it and I also talked to Suzie about it, I did try to get C-click Fix, but I just could not remember it on my phone earlier, so.
Yeah.
If you can.
And my point is not because of that, my point is the driving around the neighborhood probably on a regular basis and being consistent on, you know, one neighbor told me that they're being getting tickets because their garbage cans left out until Tuesday, but then, like I said, the next neighbor, you have four tires stacked up in the driveway that's been there.
We'll work on consistency, that's for sure.
So any public comments? I see that there's some bills, like something on chat. They were related to the.
Sorry, they were related to the American Tower conversations, but they have signed off.
And also, we did get a public comment. A public comment, excuse me, is from.
Oh, really, the, the, are you referring to the one I forwarded to you, all that was related to cannabis?
Yeah, it's from Eddie Dogger and I'm sorry if I said your last name wrong, but it says, when will the cannabis application resume? What are we still waiting for? Do we have a realistic tentative date on the progression on this matter? We have secured properties and are paying commitments to landlords, so we deserve to know the stats.
I will say that this is a fairly common practice for the cannabis individuals. I'd say in all likelihood, every commercial property that is eligible for a cannabis facility and several others that are not, have been approached by at least, at least one and more than, and, and probably more than one cannabis operator. Many of them have agreements in place, essentially, they're, 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 they're paying to hold their spot in the, in, in the event that they are successful cannabis applicants, so. I don't think, I, I think many of them were not necessarily anticipating to wait this long, but I would, I would wager a guess that there are some that have been making payments for at least a year.
And unfortunately, we don't know when we're going to open up the application.
Next council, our next study session, right?
We were talking about putting it out.
Right, we're just talking about the language in the next. I, I had asked for it to be for this meeting, but it wasn't, wasn't ready to discuss yet, so. Can I go back to council comments at the same time, that way I don't have to add some things for the other meeting, but might as well just talk about them here. Few things that I've been saving up for the last few days, just first a couple of follow-up things. I know, I know cults broke one of our water mains, so I know we were going to charge them for that, did that happen or are we in the process of doing that?
I, I have talked to consumers, that bill will be sent actually directly to cults, they're waiting for it, I'm waiting for a couple more bills. For some, some sand and some excavation, but I have Buster's bills and I have a bill for some couplings. They're just sitting on my desk waiting to.
I just want to make sure. And then I know for the twenty-twenty-one construction season, we had DDA approach work, culverts that were done as far as the code enforcement and the DPW parking lots and we were exposed to the reverse, knowledge one for that. Did we do that or are we working on doing that?
The, the paybacks.
The two that you gave me, the two journal entries?
We're working on those. Getting all of our journal entries in a row. But it, it hasn't been off the radar, let's put it that way, so.
And then, has, has there been, I know a month ago, we talked about starting to do encroachment licenses along Red River for those individuals, have we started that or?
I have not started, no, we have not started that yet, I, I think that that is I want to have a conversation with the city attorney to make sure that we are, you know, speaking of consistency with code enforcement, I would also like to make sure that we are consistently utilizing and enforcing the encroachment license on, on to those and I think that the more I, the more I contemplate that particular situation, the more I feel like we need to really take a more comprehensive look at what's going on citywide because that's not the only area and I, I don't, I, I have the feeling that we're going to end up doing some piecemeal stuff and I don't really want to do that. Right, and I, and I think the, I mean, I like the encroachment license, I like the way it's structured, but if there's so many, there may be, I mean, there's also a fee to the encroachment license and I want to find a really, the best way for our residents, so. Lots of, I have lots of questions and thoughts in my own head, so I'll wait for, we'll have those conversations with the city attorney.
Right, and then this one's for, for Scott. So I'm curious why at Panera the stop sign for the exit of the parking lot is all the way at the road as opposed to prior to, before the sidewalk? So every stop sign on Southfield Road is before the sidewalk, it's what you end up happening if people are accelerating as they're going to the road. And I, and may you add on top of that, the fact that there's a monument sign that's right there in front, a huge monument sign that's right there in front of the sidewalk, so. Not only can, as a, as a user of the sidewalk, can you not see the cars, the cars can't see you.
Are you talking about the main entrance exit?
The main entrance, I, I don't know how that stop sign ever got moved out there, but I know I almost got hit yesterday and so that kind of reminded me to bring that up.
I will drive by there, take a look and see, see if we can get DPW to move it depending on, you know, where it's located.
And then just as, as a reminder to keep it, keep it active, I have no expectation that this is going to get worked on anytime soon, given the staffing issues, but just the, the, the text blasting and, and customer service soft, logging software.
I got this guy, he's working on it.
Excellent.
We have been actively working and discussing.
And I really, really appreciate your help, thank you. All right.